Two elements, one is the key dimensions. You know, when you know, security professional is transitioning to a security leadership role, what are those key considerations? And second is from a capability and competency building standpoint, what are those interventions that could, you know, possibly be taken in order to enable that transition smoothly? And once a person has taken over a security leadership role, how do you go about, you know, navigating with the complex landscape of obligations, expectations, setting up a security function, driving it and so on and so forth? Right, so this special session we have curated, let me call upon the speakers on the stage. If I can request them to join the stage one by one. Mr. Vedhanath Kumar, CISO and data protection officer for JK Lakshmi Cement. Welcome sir. Uh, Mr. Arindam Roy, country director, India and South Asia Sands Institute. Welcome, Arindam. Uh, Ms. Kavita Kadambi, CISO for Infosys, welcome Kavita. And Mr. Atul Khatawakar, CISO for Serum Institute of India, private committed. Welcome, Atul. Uh, to steer the conversation, if I can invite Mr. Vinay Gotesh, CEO DSCI, to steer the discussion. Welcome sir. Over to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Aditya, and thank you all speaker joining here and all of you joining here, right? And how many of you are looking for a CISO role down the line? Only one. Is that role is so difficult for you to not to go into that role? Well, let's try to me, there are two sessions we set up on the CISO role. One is somebody stepping into role of CISO and other which is parallel which is happening is beyond CISO, right? So there should be also career beyond CISO and we are discussing that in another room. So in this session, especially as we have Mr. Vedhanath and Arindam, Kavita and Atul, all of them have different background. I like to all of them talk about how and what make them made them to transition to CISO role. Each of them carry different background earlier and Arindam is a little different. He is not CISO, but he will add value from the industry perspective because he serves the CISO's role. So first of all, I'd like three of them talk about it and then I'll come to you about a specific question I have. Vedhanathan, we can start with you. So your journey and what made you to think about this role is accident or first fully you took this role?
Hello, hope I'm clearly audible to all of you. So when we talk about leadership role in cybersecurity and not towards the offensive, right? When defensive security comes into picture, so CISO role is something which is one of the important role, right? And the way you are getting this role is something is very important that how you have developed over the years in your career. So when I talk about this, whether you want to become a technical CISO, technical focused CISO, not talking, sitting something 3000 feet above, right? And understanding the complete cybersecurity landscape in terms of adversaries and how a mature cybersecurity control should be implemented for organization.
You have to take your mic a little bit near so.
That is, that is very important. So if I talk about my journey, I started looking into cybersecurity for CBTT project, which is income tax department. So Form 16 was something where I started looking into overall cybersecurity operations. Cybersecurity controls and all those implementation at new filing project and
Please keep your mic.
How, how it was important that cybersecurity, if you see, is something which is not just implementation of controls here and there with point product approach. When we are looking for a cybersecurity role as CISO, very important to understand that you have the complete holistic understanding. When I was working for income tax, it was very crucial to understand even the compliance related requirements, regulatory related requirements, business acumen to understand, right? How we are dealing with all multiple ITI forms, then Form 16 and all those things. And on top of that, those needs to be communicated in effective language to the commission rates and all those things. So how you have to look into those things and all? And when it comes to the overall compliance part, that these are the important compliance and the standards what we have to implement. So holistically, these all things motivated me to come to a full fledged CISO role. Okay, there I was working as a CISO from MSP side, from Infosys side for last 10 or 11 years. So now when I joined JK, JK group now, I am working as a CISO and data protection officer at JK Lakshmi Cement. So the role is very important to understand that you have to effectively communicate in board, right? Cybersecurity has to be a top priority agenda there. If you are able to communicate that and drive it through excellence, so that is very important.
To summarize the story, you were working with income tax as a CISO role, but from the Infosys side because for some of you, the government has this interesting way of managing some of this kind of leadership roles. So they would have somebody, some service provider to play a role of CISO and there will be CISO from this MS managed security service provider side. And a lot of government institutions does have this and probably because of that exposure that you thought that you, you can ultimately go for the CISO role basically, right? So Kavita, yours is not security background, right? Still you now join the story. Can, can you pass the mic? Yeah, so can you just help us understand your story to become a CISO?
Okay, um, yes, I, I don't, I don't have a very recent background in cybersecurity. I've taken on the CISO role this year. There's been an ex Infosian here that I share the forum with and, and on beyond CISO was, was, is also an ex Infosian. So we have a proud legacy as Infosys to put security in the forefront of everything that we do. I come from a business background. I have been with Infosys for a very long time. I started out 28 years ago and I have played various roles across. And my security roles were outside of Infosys where I played at that point in time, a role of a CISO. Though very long ago, DSCI conferences were much smaller in those days. Coming, I, I, when I came back to Infosys, I ran, I ran the role of digital transformation leader for financial services. Financial services, as he, as he mentioned, just like income tax and the likes, have very, very strong needs for security. And, and you have to play the balance between business requirements and security requirements. You have to be able to go ahead and bring in speed and velocity to customers and end consumers in terms of what they expect and experiences which are top notch at the same time ensuring that security is out there. Security is no doubt a boardroom agenda, just like other aspects of a business. So moving from the role of a leader where I ran a half a billion dollar business to the role of CISO, has been a matter of transcending from putting revenue and dollars first to putting in revenue and dollars together with cybersecurity first. It's been interesting, interesting aspect and, and as we go along, we will talk a little more about what are the different aspects? How do boards look at these, these areas? And how do employees, customers, partners also go ahead and look at cybersecurity in the current zone that we are in?
So Atul, this is like a, somebody who is selling security again and where Kavita's story is more like a burning business and your story was selling security services and from that to take a role of CISO, that to an industry which probably are not that mature from the cybersecurity perspective. So tell us the journey, the decision points that you are okay, yes, you are going to take this role.
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Vinayk for calling being here. Thanks, DSCI, I've been here for a long time, almost 12 years now, a long association. I have been, as Vinayk said, I was president, global head for ISR Group and was selling security across world from US to New Zealand and used to talk, selling security, making people aware and stuff like that. And then I left company somewhere in 2018 and then started doing consulting for short time. After coronavirus, as all of you now wherever about serum, serum was unknown actually. People never knew what serum is and what they manufacture and stuff like that. But with this coronavirus, everybody started talking about serum, so do the hackers. And that became too big challenge for a manufacturing company which never thought that something like this may happen. IB, central governments, everybody started talking to CEO of Serum that you are on target, please, you know, be careful what is happening and there were so many advisor, certain cent. And then of course insurance companies was the biggest factor because Serum started looking at, you know, how do we ensure now because these, you know, everything is talking about it and cyber insurance become a very great factor. And then, you know, all these people from external sources, of course, compliance guides start talking to CEO, you need to look at very senior guy who can talk, who can understand the business as well as implement security. And that's where they approached me, of course, I was staying in Bombay and there was lot of, you know, challenge because Serum is all based in Pune. They actually work, everything is onsite and all the time, 365 days, you have to be onsite. That's how they actually produce such a big line of vaccines. Serum is to manufacture 10,000 doses per day, but during the COVID, they ramped up to 1 crore doses per day. And so do we saw, I mean, when I went there physically, we saw a lot of threats happening on the manufacturing side. Actually, lot of learnings, in fact, my all experience, whatever I did 25 years, it helps Serum to, you know, put in that whole things very quickly because they needed somebody to understand, convince because it is. In fact, I laugh and say that this role of CISO is something like Bhawarchi. I don't know, you guys have seen Bhawarchi of Rajeshkanna, there is lot of departments which keep talking, silos are there and then you, the CISO needs to talk to everyone, get them on together, run the orchestra and the role is like orchestrator. And one needs to really be understanding as Kavita said rightly dollars, one needs to understand business, what they are looking at and then how do you, you know, translate all these technologies into business language, convince them, there was zero budget in Serum when I went there. Today we are one of the, you know, largest spenders in security. But it took good amount of time to convince the directors, CEOs. You need very senior guy who need to understand both business requirements as well as compliance requirements. And I'm very proud to say that just in July, we got announced 27,000 2022 version and we immediately went for this and we got certified, immediately migrated to 22 version. So from absolutely nothing, zero to 22 running was big challenge, but we could do it, of course, there's lot of framework, we'll keep on talking, there are suppliers, there are vendors, there are partners, employees, everyone has to get aligned to all this transition. Thank you, Vinayk.
Thank you. And can I, can I again ask that question now after hearing three of them? How many of you got inspired to become CISO? Still not, still not, at least two, three times. So, Arindam, like you helped build the capability to take a role of security, right? And some of those capability feeds back to leadership role as well, right? So the role that a security professional education training provider in the entire journey, how do you see in the conversation that you do for, for somebody is aspiring to go to the next level? So what kind of discussion that come into picture when you are talking to them, this is probably code, this is probably training? There is a mic there.
Got it, thank you. Thank you, Vinayk, and thank you, DSCI, for giving me an opportunity to, to be part of this particular platform. So I'm with Science for the last 12 years now and lot of transformation has happened from the time I joined Sands and till the time I'm speaking with different senior leadership team. The first transformation happened is that when I joined Sands and when I moved into the path of the cybersecurity, CISOs were mostly looking after the IT security. But now they are wearing multiple hats, including IT security, that is privacy, there is compliance, they have to take care of the regulatory, they have to manage the RIX management. And most importantly, now the CISOs, as Kavita said, they have to be business focused and a business savvy. If I look into the journey of internet from 2000 to 2023, we started off with a simple website designing in 2000 and it moved to now AI machine language. And the threats also have increased multiple folds. It's not about the knowledge, it's not about the technical skills which the CISOs only require at to this world. There are multiple factors that the CISOs need communications with players like us in order to build a ecosystem so that the legacy can be carried forward and the communication is one of the most important part. So I believe that the CISOs look for, or aspiring CISOs should have a transparency in the, in terms of the communication. They have to access the situations and communicate well within the team and also to the board. That's how, there should not be a panic being created. And infrastructure, spending on infrastructure, spending on the softwares to protect your company's data, information is crucial for every CISOs, but also the CISOs who look into the talent building, the skill development part and the roadmap for the different team members down the line. That's what I felt.
Yeah, so I'll come to Vedhanathan on this particular part. So the role of CISO, right? And suddenly, uh, working with services company to getting, looking at other side of table to help manage security for organization, right? And there are a lot of dimensions, right? And lot of elements and lot of nuances that needs to be looked at, right? And especially the sector that you are, Atul is working is manufacturing sector. Suddenly you try to bring something, so there will be friction that will create as well, right? So tell us initial experiences of how you are able to really set up that and what kind of challenges that you see in the sector that you are working?
Yeah, exactly. So this is, this is very pertinent question. The moment you are coming from IT background or IT company, right? Where the IT security controls are of paramount importance.
Yeah.
And just coming to manufacturing sector where IT plus OT, OT is operational technologies. So you can't take any point product approach to develop security around IT systems. You have to be focused, you have to do thorough risk assessment to understand first. So first, the ground level homework has to be done. And so the way I started, the moment I joined here one year back, so first thing was to focus to understand the complete business risk. So business risk in terms of operational technologies, what are the security gaps in the IT system? Because if you understand, IT system is something which is already there in manufacturing sector also. But how much organized is that? How much secured is that? Whether there is proper security structure with a layered security approach, that is something which we have to do by thorough risk assessment. So risk assessment to understand the IT related risks, OT related security risk and convergence because with the smart manufacturing, what we can see that lately 5.0 or 4.0 before, right? So a lot of convergence is happening, your systems are getting exposed, manufacturing systems are getting exposed to the internet and see the threat. So those all study have to be done first. So that is important. Don't just try to fix some problems by point product approach. You have to be holistic in the risk management. Once you have the complete risk management done, you have to be effective communicator to the board. So first thing, what we started, we set an agenda first. So cybersecurity is going to be the top priority arranger in the boardroom discussion. The moment it started, so it was all through highlighting all the important risks. Risks across the IT landscape, there were firewalls, there were intrusion detection systems, all sort of technical controls were there. But what is the missing thing in that? So for that, you need to do a thorough assessment in terms of auditing by technical VAPT audits. So VAPT is something which is vulnerability assessment and penetration testing to understand your complete footprints, even the data which is exposed on the internet by doing some sort of cyber threat intelligence. So those all things, risks and then prioritizing the risk, you have to communicate to the board clearly that these are the important pointers where we have a clear cut roadmap ahead for the one year. So then we started into investing in those solutions by having the prioritized risks and then it is getting solved also. But when it comes to OT, so for operational technologies, if you go to a manufacturing company, for them, the priority is to keep their lights on. So business should not be getting disrupted, right? So what they see that, okay, any security control you are trying to bring, it can disrupt the ecosystem. But we need to communicate them, what are the security risks if operational technologies are also not secured? We have to give them examples of colonial gas pipeline attacks or any sort of solar wind related attacks which has affected even the OT components and OT systems also. Even the specialized molwears like Stuxnet, Black Energy, Havex, those are the completely OT related molwears. So just putting a firewall which was already there in the system is not going to help because if IT system is getting compromised, those can quickly traverse to the OT systems also and compromise human lives. So we need to understand how whileer blasts in manufacturing setup is going to disrupt the ecosystem. So those all risk assessment and the learnings need to be communicated to the board effectively. When the CEOs and the management will understand the risks, then they will guide you or navigate you in terms of the investments. And those all should be justified with the consolidated approach. No point in product approach like for, for example, if I'm going to put a firewall at the IT site or any security control like web application, firewalls or whatever you want to, even breach attack and simulation you want to do at the IT side is not going to help. Because any phishing email to a guy sitting in the operational area can do the damage. So how your email security is effective to take care of password plus even password protected attachments also? So I'm not sure whether all of us understand that also password protected attachments are something which is encrypted files. No security systems can read that file. So those all things are very important when we talk about any sort of supply chain related risk in the manufacturing sector. So those all converge approach with your solution in terms of consolidation of IT, OT risks and then you have to devise the solution. You have to protect it from file and file best or fileless attacks also, right? So those, those things are very pertinent and then we have taken a methodical approach to go one by one and invested in right set of solutions to do that with the consolidation approach because all, obviously you have to justify the budgets and your investments and the ROI is on top of that. So these things are very pertinent.
So Atul, is it, I mean, you explained it very well, but it is easy to achieve this in the manufacturing.
As I said, the role is really like a Bhawarchi. You need to be very patient, extremely patient, like you get a question from the manufacturing side that, okay, I mean, like you're saying, there is a virus in my system. Then how come it has not affected me so far? Why you are asking me to upgrade my OS? Are you are running on Windows 7, you need to upgrade? No, but I mean, like you get stunned, what are you going to talk? Because you expect somebody at some level, but unfortunately, I mean, like manufacturing guys are not at that level where they understand this language. So one needs to be really patient. You need to justify in a proper way that, you know, this can lead to this boss. I mean, you can give some examples. But yes, it's a problem because many of the manufacturing machines are, I mean, like the softwares are developed long time back, they run on certain OSs. The manufacturer says, you don't upgrade, my system will not work, you are running on XP or 7. And then you have a confrontation, something like that. So you, you need a role very patiently to be driven and it's, it's really difficult. I mean, it's not so simple, but you can crack it by developing the confidence.
But your, your meditation skill would have helped.
Yeah, I mean, one way is that what Vinayk knows me a bit, but I've been practicing a lot on the yogas and all. Yes, actually it helps, I would say because it's a man, man handling because you know that the guy doesn't know much and if even they are aggressive, you need to be patiently taking it and then converting it to, you know, something which board can understand as well. So I think.
So Kavita, what is different? To be CISO means what? So what attributes you should have, what kind of skill you should have? I'm not talking about technical skill, I'm talking about managing and orchestrating things. So what traits and skill and attributes that you should really present to the table so that team works with you, you have attention to detail, you have support and sponsorship from the management and you also engage with external ecosystem with the, with the level of confidence? Because clients for you is thousands of clients, right? And every project is different from the security perspective.
Correct, correct, yeah. So I think good point. How many, how many folks here are from the IT sector? Show of hands, okay? And how many from manufacturing? Okay, not many. So I learned a lot from, on the manufacturing side. But, but if you've been, if you're in the IT sector, then there is a good probability that you'll also be supporting customers who are in the manufacturing space. But not just manufacturing in biotech, in consumer, in retail, in telecom, media, financial services, healthcare, insurance, et cetera. And if you happen to be a global organization like the way we are across 100 countries servicing while primarily from India, but with a presence everywhere, then the complexity comes in with respect to regulations, rules, laws, cultures, where you have to integrate with customers, with employees, with various stakeholders across. And at the same time, you have to be going ahead and keeping yourself secure with some level of uniformity because eventually it's about risks on the security side. At the same time, you have to bring in, you have to ensure that you are enabling business and not necessarily stopping business. So the, so one of the things that, that I heard when I, when I got into this role was a lot of people who were on the sales side and the delivery side were very happy. They said, oh wow, now, now you're out there and, and you will make things much smoother for us. So, and I think you have to then set expectations across to say, hey, of course, absolutely, security always makes things smoother for you as long as you also understand it. So from a traits standpoint, I think the leadership traits that are required for this role is the same that you would have for any other kind of a CXO role. I don't think there's anything different or any, any other large leadership that you have to be able to go ahead and do. You have to be able to go ahead and take teams along, your own teams. Your level of technology may not be as superior as somebody in your team or you might have strengths in particular areas, in which case you should be able to leverage them and work with the strengths of your team. You will have to project the capabilities of your team to the largest stakeholders in the organization. Because long gone are the days when cybersecurity was just a bunch of folks who would be out there underground, keep very geeky and keeping you secure. No, right now, the expectation is you will be out in the forefront. All of us in my team are, have had to go through AI courses because this is mandatory for us, not just because our tools use AI or because the threat actors use AI, but because we want to be able to go ahead and launch AI as a business and a business model for our customers. So in that case, how do you make sure that you are able to go ahead and provide responsible AI? And over there, the cybersecurity team comes in the forefront because you have to secure AI. So it's AI for security and security for AI, which is super important and that's something that you're out there in the forefront. You also have to be able to go ahead and navigate the customer landscape because customers' CISOs and customer business groups have very different sets of expectations based on the businesses that they are running, based on their risk appetites and based on the kind of regulatory requirements and their own end customer requirements that they might have. You have to be able to go ahead and tailor yourselves, your narratives and your expectations accordingly. Because that's when you will be seen as a business enabler and, and hence be able to go ahead and contribute appropriately. It's now a given that It's now a given that CISO is going to enable the business. A CISO is in the forefront, a CISO will be responsible to the board and will be required to know everything about business as well as security. However, perhaps what is not as strongly put forward into the forefront is how security teams globally play a role and how every individual has a responsibility for security. We're an organization of three hundred thousand plus employees globally, plus a lot of partners who work with us. How do I make sure that every individual in my organization, every partner who supports me, every customer goes ahead and puts security to the forefront? We run programs like Secure by Design to be able to go ahead and take this forward so that everybody has these on their agenda. So every persona out there, whether it is a person in the CFO office, in the IT office, a developer office, an engineer or a customer facing salesperson, understands security. So these are some of the aspects that are now coming into the forefront. And for these, I think they are the very, very similar traits of leadership that are out there. You have to be able to go ahead and influence, you have to be able to go ahead and put security on the agenda of every individual who matters on the one hand, as well as the ones who will ensure that you are safe and secure as an organization.
Yeah. Thank you for very comprehensively covering and answering that question. So Arindam, as Vedhanatha started, right? So the volume and velocity of the things that we are doing is increasing quite significantly, right? And there could be one thing out of millions that could go wrong. And that's why CISO as a technical role is getting good attention, right? You see, so has to be very technical in terms of understanding how things are moving, right? So does that mean the demand for technology capability, skill building is increasing?
Yeah, to some extent, Vinak. I agree to this particular point because I would give a simple example. When we, five years back, we have only one training program for the CISOs, for the senior leadership. Now we have got a cybersecurity leadership curriculum which focuses on ten different modules, I would say. It's starting from the strategy point of view, that is important. But on the technology point of view, we also emphasis on how effective is your incident response plan? A. How is your VAPT looking? B. The third is that implementation of the new technology like Kavita was saying about AI, what are the risks over there? Is the CISO certified and trained enough in order to handle those particular risks coming out of the AI and a missing language in the future? Manufacturing part, like Atul was saying, is that one of the key factors coming in today's world is the OT security. Because the supply chain completely lies on different OT compliances and the technologies what is there. Not only the manufacturing industries, but also our oil and gas industries, utilities, energies, with us coming up with the smart cities, the smart meters. Okay, and the way the smart cities are being designed, the vulnerability, if not taken care of, the different layers of protections, then it becomes very difficult to protect your data, what I understand. And the CISOs should have the capabilities on technical point of view to understand the implications of each and every technology they are implementing into the system and how to protect that technology or the infrastructure. So going forward, I would say the CISO would not be, the future CISOs would not be only a technically driven person, but they should have the adaptability to welcome new technologies, understand the point of view of the new technologies and the systems what they are putting into place. And also to be certain extent, they should be technologically aware. Because they should be raising the awareness of the risk of doing a business. And the risk of doing a business if it's not being raised in a proper manner, compromising your one part of the business which is exposed to the internet, to the world, then there would be a serious concerns which will be coming in the next part. And lastly, I would say that it's technology with some flavor of business. Because the CISOs has to, nowadays the CISOs has to give a understanding of the business security ROI in terms of what you are doing, everything is about the dollars. So if you are spending dollars or if you are implementing certain things, then what are the different things you are getting as a company, from the company point of view? So yes, Vinak, I completely agree, the technology part would be an important part for the CISOs. But to me, they have to build a proper ecosystem
Yeah.
for the next generation and to come up with a particular succession plan.
Yeah.
So somebody from the team member should come up.
Yeah. So it's not like everything we are talking here. This is such an interesting panel where we want you to also ask a question, right? And somebody who is aspiring for this role or something that is coming in your mind in terms of asking those questions for somebody who has recently become CISO. Yeah. So there is a lead there. We'll go there and come here. You start with him. Yeah.
Hello. I was just listening to all the panel members talking about cybersecurity per se. Don't we think that now the time has come when even the individual kids or a family member should have one CISO and think like that? Otherwise, it will be very difficult for us to really take this up.
Yeah. So that's definitely important part. Can you also get that question so that we will answer two question together?
Hi. My question to Mr. Atul, CISO of CIVAN CISO. So the best pain area for all CISO, existing CISO are budget. And you just explained that's like when you join, everyone's a zero budget in CIVAN CISO for CISO. So I have two questions on this particular platform. How do you handle that security with so low budget? A second, being in a pharma industry, how do you handle security and IT compliance with so low budget? Because I have experienced working in a pharma industry where billions of dollars of security budget. So how do you handle these both situations?
Yeah, you can start with this.
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
That's very larger question which we will answer that question.
Yeah. So good question and I appreciate. When I also went first time, it was very difficult to, you know, digest the fact that, because I came from like building APAC's largest SOC, five hundred thousand EPAs and stuff. You will name and everything was there. From such background coming to this role, I did understand first is that the guys are not aware they need to spend money first. The second thing is, as I said, patience. What I did was, I never asked for budget for first three months. I gave them the plan for three years. I said, okay, look, you do not have anything, this is how the roadmap looks like for three years. Now the question comes is, do I trust this guy? What is he talking about? Because from zero to again, millions of dollars, nobody will trust you. But we, nobody will trust you. So then I thought, what are the kind of ways we can run this program effectively? And I started doing something which doesn't cost anything. I said, I'll train your four thousand guys. I ran, I gave them the picture of physical training. So I started conducting security trainings for the entire group. Very difficult even. The first batch we conducted, we had to really call some friends, have a come and sit here because I want some audience. And then it became a process, HR ran it through and then we, in one year's time, we reached out to four thousand guys. This costs zero. We didn't took any money from outside. Slowly that feedback started coming after one quarter, everybody wrote to, you know, board that this program is running extremely well. And you know what happened? People said, because of this program, we are able to secure our internet banking. Because till that time, some of the guys had lost money in their internal banking. That started building a confidence. Okay, I mean like these guys are not talking something different, these guys are making. Then actually what we did is we called third party audit also. We did assessment from topmost company in the Israel, we called them. The guys actually vetted my program. What your CISO is saying, he is giving you little, you know, dates which are little longer. You should expedite this program fast, otherwise you are at risk. But this was another point where management got convinced and then there I never looked.
Israel was key factor here.
Israel was also key factor, but of course we have, another thing is unfortunately we have thinking that Israel is way ahead in security. And my personal opinion is it's not that. We also know everything what that guys know. Yeah, but it helps. And then I ran a program of putting processes in place and got them certified to ISO twenty seven thousand. It was twenty thirteen version. So in one year's time, without spending too much money, we did lot of things which caught attention, which got vetted by everybody stakeholders. And then, then see, then it becomes, see, it's trying to build trust with board. Once you build that trust, they are aware these guys are working, they know they have struggled, they have seen the struggle. Then nobody will object you and the second year, third year, then it becomes very smooth for you guys. I mean like anybody. So that building trust becomes very.
And that is a purpose, right? I had seen why we thought about this session is stepping into CISO because I'm seeing some of them are struggling. So this initial days of a CISO, right? Suddenly you want to take on so many things together and you want to hit hard. And sometimes that creates a significant reaction and that doesn't really work. So whether your experience of those initial days to, and answering that question of getting.
Yeah, one point I just want to add because I completely second to what he mentioned, Atul mentioned. You have to convince by demonstrating the facts rather than just showcasing that, okay, I am here. I am going to solve your complete security problems. They should be trusting in the investments, right? How? So what even we did? So on the awareness front, one step ahead by doing the cyber drills. Drills in terms of phishing attacks, simulations on all the employees, right? By sending them ransomware templates, by sending them phishing templates, then through voice calls, SMS, text and even WhatsApp messages also. And try to understand that how many of them got phished also. When those percentages got depicted to the board by that these, they are even few of the members or few of the employees have submitted their credentials. So you can see that what will happen. And just simulating that process, it was effectively communicated. And then a manual sort of coaching, not the typical sort of training where you are just guiding them by running a PPT. It should be tailored education, tailored education for OT folks, OT set of requirement.
There were one question here because now our membership is going in this area, especially non-IT critical and manufacturing sector. So what we are finding to, first immediate thing and there is definitely support which goes for training and awareness. And there's, sometimes then it looks like tremendous impetus given training and awareness and not to actual budget that you seek for it basically. So that remain challenge for some of the organization where when it comes to security, it's always training. And CIVAN CISO only understand the language, I have to train my thousands of people, but not really actually committing to budget. So this training to budget commitment, does it create a challenge?
Obviously, but if, let's suppose you have created a program completely and then having a sort of tailored education in multiple rounds. So when I was talking about a tailored education, for example, developers need to be educated on WASP top ten vulnerabilities.
Oh, okay.
The same way OT guys need to be focused understanding on OT related cybersecurity risks, be it OT malware's or OT IT convergence and all those things. So you need to get them engaged to understand that it is everybody's responsibility and being a team sport, you are also not the billion readers, you are just a supporting system, the ecosystem. And then we created InfoSec Wisdom. On weekly basis, we used to educate each and every employee with new ongoing threats and how the mitigation is happening around the world and even in our system also. So then these things are getting engaged, even the board is completely engaged to understand. And then they are coming up with these suggestions also that don't make that lengthy programs, Vedhanathu. You have to even try to understand that, okay, these are the timing limits and all those things. So lot of suggestions, inputs are coming into. So that way it is overall engagement and top to down approach.
Yeah. So Kavita, my question is.
I'll just add to this. I think, I think, yes, most people understand training.
Yeah.
And then putting their money into beyond training.
Yeah. So that's.
Is what is key, right?
Yeah.
And I think there are various ways to do that. And they go into, if your training is effective, you will have some people falling prey to phishing. You can potentially simulate that to a lot more. And hence say, these are the kind of probabilities that an organization is looking at. And that's a way to go ahead and garner budgets. That's one approach, which is basically to go ahead, simulate, come and say that, hey, this is what it means. And say that, and budgets obviously have to go across various areas, right? Including training itself, but much beyond training. So one is to show how bad you can potentially be, whether it is through simulations, audits and the likes. The other way is to go ahead and give views and ideas about, hey, this is what customers expect. And if customers' budgets look like this, this is what ours should be, potentially, right? So those kind of benchmarks are something that can do. Third would be to go ahead and say, this is what peer groups are looking at, your own peer groups are looking at. And this is how they have performed in your maturity assessments, audits, simulations, et cetera, et cetera. So I think there is enough, enough information and data out there to be able to go ahead and tap into, to be able to, and then leverage budgets. Of course, eventually it will all come down to your own influencing skills of whether you will be able to get that money out and in the timely manner and to the right set of programs and projects that you can get to.
Because once you have deployed one effective program, let's suppose deploying technical controls. That's why I am always advocate of CISOs being as a technical leaders also. Because you have to make that project success, board is looking, going to look into that, your ROI and all those things. So let's suppose if the new security system is coming, how it is improving the business at the core? If it is not improving the business at the core, then ROI is not only the cybersecurity investment justifying there is no cybersecurity breach. For example, the new converse security approach with SASE is solving the modern security problems. But then also you have to be completely effective to understand that which technology offers the best. Because the third parties or vendors are just there to convince you to take their solution. How effective you are to communicate.
More like a vendor driven market.
Because you have to communicate them what is good and bad in their solution. You can't just take any approach and haphazard approach, okay, I am going to this technology. No, you have to convince that why I have opted your solution and why I have rejected your solution. If you are able to communicate that, it will create your brand portfolio as an effective communicator and CISO.
So for the big organization like Impostor, you still have to put lot of effort to get budget or budget is given for?
That's a different conversation. We can have dinner over there. However, I think budgets would be a conversation in any organization, in any organization, right? You could be doing, you could be having a lot of revenue with great margins, great top line, bottom line. And cybersecurity is a space which can really, really go ahead and take up a lot of money. We just spoke about how there are lot of vendors, lot of tools.
I'm seeing now, some organizations are talking about thirty, forty, fifty percent of their IT budget for cybersecurity.
Yes. Okay. So gone are the days when it was relatively simplistic. And every organization will have this challenge. But I think a lot of this, we can turn this around to say, this is, if you put this much, this is the kind of increase in revenue or improvement in margins that you can get. You can, there are models which are available, which will be able to go ahead and say that this is the kind of improvement in top line and bottom line that you can bring in by this kind of budget improvement. Budgets can be different ways, right? It could be in terms of team budgets, skills improvements, addition of new skills and talent. It could be in terms of team budgets, skills improvements, addition of new skills and talent, different aspects of security that you want to bring in. How you want to be able to do it. There are also other ways. You can, you can potentially have customers investing for you. You can have partners investing for you. So different models, but I'm guessing that this is, it's not a unique problem. Everybody would have the same problem and we should, we should talk about how everybody gets those budgets.
Yeah. Any other question?
So I, I.
We, we are ending with your question, so I'm just, so we go there and. Yeah. Who is talking?
Okay. So everybody is talking about A I. In fact, you have been talking about that.
Yeah.
So what the, I want to ask this question to all the panel member. What is the A I or generative A I as a governance will be landing into an organization? Will it be the, be the CISO function or with the legal? With this debate is already going on and this is already on the door and we have to face this sooner and later.
So question for you is like.
So my question is that, where it will be landing? Will it be the CISO or will it be the legal? Because that, even though Big Four has not come up, any of those recommendation, neither any of those one. So what is the opinion from the?
Yeah, so this is one question, we'll take two, three. So I, I, I understood the question. There is one there and one here. Can you just quickly move the mic? Yeah, yeah.
So my question is a bit of technical.
Yeah.
So in the context of endpoint security, how the CISO is going to decide or make the balance between security and forcing these stringent security measures?
Balance between?
So CISO is responsible for maintaining the security, right? So one, one aspect is security and other aspect is the customer has the ability to enjoy themselves.
Okay, that's, that's good point.
Yeah, I had a question and I think maybe for Kavita specifically, which is that, you know, if there is a data breach of any of your customers on any systems that you're handling, how do you sensitize the customer? How do you sensitize your own board, the non-technical people who may be involved in running the business? And what, how do you sort of prepare for something like this? Because most of the conversation has been about preparing for preventing an attack, right? And S O Ps, awareness, et cetera.
Yeah, so let me, let me, let me simplify this question. So question coming, I'm just trying to contextualize to this session is, one part of CISO's role is to respond to incident. And that may scare many people, right? Breaches are happening. So when you are talking role of CISO, then the breaches definitely get an attention. Then you get into that basically. So how do you, if you've taken decision like this, so does it factor that the breaches will happen and you'll be done, who will be responsible for that?
Yeah, obviously, right? So there are very few CISOs who would, who would not be breached. I would think that, you know, that would be a remarkable few number, it's, it would be a handful. Of course, the lever and extent might be different and it's now a given. You have to be able to assume that, yes, there's a very high probability that you will be breached. And in that case, what would be your response? It's all going to be about response. So the first thing that you should probably.
But there's a tendency in CISO like, if something like this happens, they become a scapegoat. And many time, I hear that conversation and most of time externally, our ecosystem and internally as well.
Sure, so, yeah, so I think, I think if you go with the assumption, I mean, having stepped into a CISO role recently and I'm sure all of you would have also. The first thing you would probably go ahead and say that you should at some point in time, expect an attack or a breach. If you set those expectations and say that, hey, if this happens, then this is the process to follow. These are the different steps which are going to be in place. These are the kind of decisions that will be taken or will be expected from you all at those points in time. This is the kind of responses that you will be having to give to customers depending upon customer domains, locations, geographies that they operate in, jurisdictions. The kind of contracts that you have with them in the, in terms of what, what, what you would have signed up for, et cetera. It's really about expectation management initially.
And reporting.
Before.
And reporting to.
Before, before a breach. And once a breach happens, being able to go ahead and stick to your process and procedure and then be able to go ahead and work through that. And you will have different stages of that. You would be, you would be obviously working with your customers. You would be working with your teams, you would be working with other influencers across the organization. You will be going back for budgets, you will be working with, with the board. Because you, and, and depending upon the magnitude obviously of, of breaches incidents that you would be having. And all of these are a given and an expectation from a CISO at all points in time. So I think if we go with the right set of setting expectations and managing expectations, having the preparedness, which is what most CISOs have around going and having all your preventions, detections, preventions in place. But response, absolutely speed of response, being able to go in with the right set of procedures around it would be essential.
So the other question which I want because now I'm just looking at the clock as well. So the, the security versus flexibility, if, if Atul you and, because that will be very critical from the manufacturing or any non I T, because I T industry understand the meaning of control. Employees are used to one work in a very kind of a control environment. That may not be true in a sector like a manufacturing company. So how do you manage? And briefly you can talk and then I will also, but then I have to comment on it.
No, as I said, it's very difficult because all the while the compliances in manufacturing are in a different zone. They are not looking much onto cybersecurity, but they are more focused on, you know, quality of the product and, you know, all other things. And we have observed, you know, sensitizing these people is the first step. And that's what we did is trained all the guys on the manufacturing side. And now they are pretty much aware about what kind of things can go wrong in their personal life also, they have experience. So all that helped us to, you know, kind of bring that awareness across various, various people. But yes, I mean technically, there, there is a lot of challenge, like when does do enforce you lot of things not to change?
Yeah.
And that, that becomes.
That's true in O T environment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so you need to put in controls like, you know, at least proactively monitoring certain things, looking at vulnerabilities. You should be aware, maybe create separate zones for them, monitor them very separately. But those things are really compensatory controls, they are not really controls, but you have no option on that, so you need to.
Can technology help to provide both flexibility and also security?
So that's why, first of all, you need to understand the technology first, that's why. How we have to achieve that? For example, I will, I will go completely with example to demonstrate. And if not, how to detect and all those things. And then effective communication to the community also by demonstrating something. So for example, the recent example, one H T M L file came to our systems, right? So how the deep C D R technology worked there? So deep C D R is nothing but content disarm and reconstruction.
Yeah.
Giving the employees that their mails are not going to be stopped. They will be receiving the mails, but at the same time, a clean copy of the mail. So just quarantining the mail is not going to help in manufacturing sector because the moment I joined, I saw a lot of, you can say that quarantine portal access to everybody, they were just going to that portal and downloading the emails.
But you are saying that dropping and quarantines, there are technologies helping you to remove the.
End of the day, user has to, user has to receive that email, right? There should not be any impediment into the business emails. So how you can do that? So that is the one thing. The second important thing is, you need to demonstrate that this is something which can be a problem if you are not going to govern. And that way you understand, make them understand that this is the flexibility level also. You have to create a right set of balance by that security solution only. For example, password protected attachments, any of the password protected attachments, if it is coming from income tax department or railways or any, any other reputed organization, they can be also spoofed. So we have to make them understand that you have now option to put a password, get that clean copy of the file without the intervention of the I T team. So these are the important checks and balances, technical important things.
Passwordless authentication can be used to.
Yes, so the next January, we are traversing to a passwordless journey so that even users don't have to go into those complexity, fourteen character to sixteen and what, where to stop?
Yeah.
Two factors are getting compromised. We have just seen the Okta news and all those things. So this is something where you, you keep on educating, but your cybersecurity practices should be that much advanced that awareness is something which is coming at the second and technological controls are at the top.
Let me come to Arindam briefly on that A I question and then we come to the last question which the lady had asked. So, so A I and use of A I and in the enterprise system is a challenge basically, right? And I wouldn't like to limit to only cybersecurity because there are a lot of things which we can talk about when you talk about A I. What are those thing that, that can be looked at to manage the security risk out of A I?
So Vinay, what we have done a research and these research papers are available for public reading also. So A I is good to have tool, but the exposures of that A I, that should be limited to the need of the organizations. What we have found as per the research. There are, there can be multiple threats which may, which may come out of the A I applications, to be honest with you, with that. But the challenge is that there should be a proper threat hunting model and, and a system within the organization before implementing that A I and it should be a continuous program in order to protect the organization from the A I.
Yeah, and there are, there are startups and solutions available to help you manage risk out of it.
So if I may add, see, if we, if we look at A I overall, you look at it, you have to be able to secure all aspects of it. Starting from how the A I is accessed, the access types, the different kind of threat vectors which are out there, the data types, the data models. And, and you have to be able to go ahead and run security across the threat landscape. You should be able to go ahead and run it along the design aspect as well as on the engineering side. So you look at different kinds of attacks which would be out there, whether you are looking at extraction attacks, you're looking at poisoning attacks and the likes.
Yeah.
All of them have, and, and, and there is a reasonable level of advancement now which has happened on the security side of A I to be able to bring in a level of protection. In my view, we can't hold back A I. It's there, it's going to happen. So the sooner we as cybersecurity professionals understand that we have to secure A I and if we are ahead of the curve, I think it will be beneficial for everybody.
Yeah, yeah. So let me now come to the last question, which is an important question, right? And which probably to certain extent, Atul also dwell into that. It imply the, the working in enterprise system and working in the personal life, right? We, in our family life, we do many things digitally, right? Including contacting to our relay or ones to lot of transactions are happening digitally. Lot of our data is happening and also getting exposed digitally and there are lot of footprint that we leave basically. So in a, in a family ecosystem, a very interesting question, somebody has to play a role of CISO. And if that is your employee, then it becomes easy for you. So thanks for that comment. If anybody would like to add, because with that we have to close because in the interest of time, because there's another session on diversity which is happening in the same room.
Actually, it's very interesting because it's very difficult to, you know, kind of educate the kids, especially social media. Because threats around social media are really disastrous and it has impacted, impacted across, you know, all kids. I do, in my family, I keep on talking to my, you know, daughter always.
But in your family, you can't play a role of CISO, right?
Yeah, you can't really because, you know, there is a limitation and you know.
Can be controlling in your family.
Controlling is very difficult. But still, I think my daughter always says that you should come and talk to our teachers, talk to school guys. And I think that is very important to sensitize the guys across the schools. I mean, it's very, very important.
Because I recently come across some of the challenges, like many people have not enabled the two factor authentication on their social media. And that led to lot of compromises happening and people's Facebook account got completely compromised with it basically. So somebody in family should be certainly looking at what kind of footprint that we have been creating as a members of family.
Yeah, and I, and I know that D S E I itself is at the forefront of doing a lot of training and education across, across the country on cyber education. This is happening in a very focused manner across. And one of the advocations that's happening over there is to be able to go ahead and be securing your families, your societies, your overall immediate ecosystem. And, and this is happening in, I can say for sure in how it's happening in Karnataka because this is also being driven by the CISOs at Karnataka.
Yeah, so it's a cyber for you that we have been doing in Karnataka.
So it's, it's across the board around how everybody should be very, very aware of cybercrime. What is a kind of basic protection and hygiene that is required on everybody in the current digital age that we're in? It's not an answer to who plays the CISO in a family, but I think we're all trying to have that role of being reasonably educated around it.
Yeah, but on top of that, what we discussed, so a few important controls, right? What we can do is something sort of parental control on all the electronic components.
Control doesn't.
Parental control is, is something, yeah, which is important on top of that.
Very early stage, I can understand.
Yeah, you have to check related to those cyber bullying on the internet side. You have to at least keep a tab.
Be trained with Instagram account, right?
So then also, but where they post and all those things, you can at least have a look there and check that.
I think in that, I think everybody needs to stepping in our personal social life, everybody try to stepping in the role of, may not be CISO, but the security conscious mind, right? We, we all need to be doing that.
Yeah, true, Vinay. And what we believe is that the students from the age group of, say, ten to eighteen should have a proper cybersecurity awareness.
Yeah.
Okay, and that should be implemented from the school level itself. And we work with multiple countries, including D S E I, we are working with a particular program for the empowering the students or the children of our home on the importance of a cybersecurity.
Yeah.
And that, that's the way forward, otherwise it's difficult to protect.
There is.
Exposure.
Senior citizens.
Yeah.
Senior citizens.
And that is what a role of CISO is not confined to one part of the organization until now. But now it is becoming more business critical role, but it's also becoming society critical role as well. And that's what the, the first challenge, but also at the same time, interesting challenges to be in. And there is no harm to be aspiring for role of CISO. So I am sure with this session, you are able to get some idea of somebody which is stepping into CISO and kind of challenges. But at the same times, the way you can manage and look at those challenges basically, just help us to unveil some of those dimensions of perspective. And really thank you all and please join me to give big hand to my panelists here to help us going to this topic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Atul, thank you. Thank you.